Good to go to that.
Now I was having trouble reading here, so I got a new pair of reading glasses. It was almost an embarrassment when I had to, he had me read the consent agenda. Alice does it.
I'm thinking.
The golf is been thrown.
My eyes very well in my back.
Well, I've always needed driving lessons for St. Paul's. But this last couple of years, I couldn't read ingredients and.
Failures.
Yeah. They're fictional values and models and then at restaurants, it would be dim at all. If it was anything but black and white, you know, I was having trouble reading the menu. I was having to take a picture.
You have a minute and a half to wait there.
It just. Be it. These are just door company prices.
How are you, Bruce?
I'm good. How are you, David?
I'm great. Beautiful day. My favorite. We were out there. We were waiting for you. Here's your bill. Hey, I'd ask somebody got brain freeze if I was gonna die.
I was hosting thirty men and women for a fundraiser.
Oh, okay. Very good. Yeah.
You going to this?
I'm trying, yeah.
I think I will.
I got it on my calendar.
Protest?
Good morning and welcome to the Berry County Board of Commissioners Committee of the Hall Meeting for May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Would you please stand for our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Reports from state and county officials, are there any state and county officials who would like to address the board? Hearing none, limited public comment at this time, anybody wishing to participate in limited public comments, you have three minutes.
I want to make sure that's Catherine. Good morning, board, my name is John Rocha Hastings Township.
Yeah. 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 Hi, my name is John Rocha Hastings Township. I just wanted to come to you guys real quick about a project that we're doing on Maple Grove Township. So, Mike, this might be something that would be interesting for you to listen to. A lot of people don't know this, even growing up in Berry County, and I just learned about this just recently too. I'm a bit of a history buff, and when it comes to military history, I'm a huge history guy. And right in Maple Grove was a cemetery called Quaker Cemetery. And you're not going to find it with any mark or anything like that. You come off of Cloverdale and you take a right down Guy, which is a beaten old dirt path. And then you go about a half mile down and there's a two-track that goes up to the cemetery that's buried in the woods. It's called Quaker Cemetery and it was settled by Quakers back in Maple Grove in the early eighteen hundreds. But there are a couple of Civil War veterans that are buried up there. But I think one of the most interesting points is there's an American Revolutionary War hero that is buried right there in our own backyard. Guy named John Quick, he was a fourteen-year-old kid who crossed the river with George Washington in Delaware in seventeen seventy-six. So this is a huge piece of history. He fought in Battle of Trenton, was wounded there. He was stationed in Valley Forge, he fought in Monmouth. And recently, a couple of years ago, the Daughters of the American Revolution came out there, kind of helped out with his cemetery a little bit, but with his headstone, he did a rededication. What we're looking for now is on the eighteenth of May, we're gathering a bunch of forces and we have some dedicated business owners from across Hastings and in Berry County that are going to help us with revitalizing that cemetery, doing a cemetery cleanup, patent monuments, are dedicating all those supplies for cleaning those monuments and fixing the headstones and so on and so forth. So we're reaching out to the community, see if anybody would like to partner. This isn't a campaign thing, this is just me as John Rocha, as a veteran, helping out. We've got some other non-political affiliated businesses and stuff that want to just come out there and help and kind of set straight this historical landmark really in Berry County. So I just wanted to kind of bring that to you guys' attention. And then on May twenty-fifth, Memorial Day weekend, on that Saturday, we're going to have a rededication. So working with Charlie and American Legion, working with the VFW from Nashville, the Nashville Historical Society, as well as several other organizations, we're going to Daughters of the American Revolution, we're going to do a rededication on that Saturday. And the details and times and all that stuff is yet to be done, as we're still kind of finalizing, organizing everything like that. But I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention because this is a, this is a big deal. Anybody knows where my heart's at when it comes to military is a big deal. But this is, this is a kid who's fourteen years old, think about fourteen-year-old crossing the river with Washington, inviting for our, our nation and in the spirit of our nation. So we want to make sure that he is dedicated, that he's rededicated to this county, that people understand and know where he's at, he's located, so they can visit and enjoy that. So just look out for more information, I'm going to have that and I'll bring that out and I'll make sure all you guys also receive that information. So if you'd like to be a part of that, if you'd like to help out in any way, you guys will have that information, so. All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair. Yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead.
This cemetery, it's right next door to where I used to get my dog groomed. And I would go up there while I was waiting, it's something everyone should see, the Quaker Cemetery. And it's kind of heartbreaking because I didn't see anyone buried there over fifty-four years old. So many children, so many young people, it must have been a heartbreaking life then. But it's something, you know, everyone should visit. I'm going to try to get there, John.
Yep. Appreciate that.
Awesome, thank you. Additional public comment?
Good morning, I'm Andrew Holtrust of Hastings, advocating for John. These kids that we've had in history have been important in our government because some of them from way back to Paul Henry, which gave us our concept of liberty, grew up to become great men under these world leaders that we had to stop us from the oppression like the British. And that kind of has evolved into our liberty and our freedom. And for these kids to have these unmarked graves kind of isn't that much of a good thing. So that would be nice to do. We. We have a little bit of a problem though with getting kids involved in these things, getting them politically motivated. And that's kind of not good on our future because we are the future as kids. We have to replace the people that are before us and take their spots in order to keep the government going. That's what I got today.
Thank you. Good job. Additional public comment?
Good morning, Rich Tunkey, Berry County Community and Health. I'd just like to say I appreciate the, the history lesson this morning. Grandfather taught history for several years in the pier, so I appreciate that. And we have a scholarship, an education scholarship in his honor. So anyway, I'm here this morning not to teach history, but to remind everyone that May is Mental Health Month, Mental Health Awareness Month, something that my organization is engaged in all year long. But as a reminder, as a CC-BHC demonstration site, we are able to provide mental health and substance services to anyone regardless of income or insurance. We've seen quite a, quite an increase in people that we've served in fiscal year twenty-three. So with that increase to access, so over sixteen hundred people, sixteen, I think, forty-seven, and we're on pace to increase that by another approximately six percent. One of the cool things about CC-BHC is it's allowed us to serve individuals that have a mild to moderate condition, where before we weren't able to do that. So we served almost three hundred individuals with a mild to moderate condition, again, increasing access to services for people. And then we also increased access or just awareness for veteran services. So if you're interested in a lot more numbers and statistics, our annual report is out on our website, or you could contact either myself or Brenna at, at my office. So what's next as far as CC-BHC or community mental health? So the state is wanting us to set up what they call urgent care, so much like if you have a physical health concern and you go to an urgent care, similar thing with behavioral health or mental health. What that looks like, we're in the process of figuring out, but more than likely that will involve expanded hours. And the other thing that we're working on is hiring a nurse practitioner onsite. So I think for years we've had three docs, but they've all been telehealth and that works well. So this will be the first time in years that we've had a doc or nurse practitioner in the psych department onsite. I believe she will be board certified in populations. And then the last thing I just want to mention is this Friday from ten to, from noon to one, MAC is sponsoring what they call local government learning community on the opiate settlement funds. And Liz Luns, who's presented here several times, is presenting or speaking at that. And those meetings are just learning how, how to use the, the opiate settlement funds and trying to learn from different communities. So that's all I have for, for you this morning. And just again, a reminder, May is Mental Health Month, so thank you.
Thank you, Rich, appreciate that information.
Good morning, Larry Osborne from Dalton. I sent you all an article, I hope you'll take a moment to read, it's actually just a synopsis. It's about a county in Missouri that's being sued by one of their local political parties. And they're suing the county clerk because they want to be the sole, have the sole right to, on who files underneath their political banner. So kind of interesting article, we'll, we'll have to wait and see how that all turns out. But just remember, it all started with a questionnaire, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry.
Good morning, Joel Robinson, Rutland Township. Something that I want to see the sheriff's office focus on perhaps a little more pointedly would be work programs. Today is a day that I remember, not because my birthday is in two days, but because I had my best employee that I've ever had work for me. I've been self-employed a business owner for fifteen years and this gentleman, his name was Ron Hyten. He was a felon, he had a violent, drug, and gun history, and I managed to snag him as an employee shortly after he graduated from his college, as he called it, from prison. He spent seven years in prison, if I remember correctly, and he was looking for someone that was willing to stick their neck out for him. And I happened to be available and I told him, I said, this is, this is what I have at stake, this is what you would be helping me do, and this is what you'll make if you do a good job. And he worked for me for two years and it was awesome. There were some questionable things he tried to do, I was like, no, 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 we can't go that route, we have to stay on the straight and now. But over the course of that time he worked for me, he, he completely changed his life. He was running around on his wife, he quit doing that. He wasn't spending the time with his family, he had a daughter, it was the same year, same age as my daughter. And he would spend two weeks out of every month, he would take off from work to be able to spend time with his family. And I told him that you would never look back and regret that because you never know what time you have. And so anyway, he called me up one day and he goes, hey, I would really like to buy my own truck, but I'll work for you if I have to because I know that you stuck your neck out for me. I said, nope, you've made me lots of money, you've done very well and I'm not going to stop you from bettering yourself. So he went and bought his own truck, had his own tra, he used my trailer to get started. And on May seventh, two thousand and eighteen, I had a phone call from his phone and me, I was just being a wiseacre about it, answered the phone with a smart-ass answer, and it was his wife. He'd passed away, May seventh, in his sleep. You never know how much time you have, but thanks to being able to work with him and get him into a situation where he wasn't thinking how he was going to relive his past and do it without getting caught, the work got him out. And in an environment where he was able to see that, hey, I can do something productive, I can make this money honestly. And so anyway, May seventh, that's today, and that's just my token, remember, Ron, thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Well, boss, call the township and I'll just give you a heads up, this will be a recurring, a recurring theme until the task is completed. We're still approaching a hard point on the siting and zoning of wood and solar. There are twenty counties and at least twenty counties in Michigan that have already implemented siting and zoning ordinances. And I frankly don't know why we can't do some sort of a copy paste on those things. We have a heartthrob coming up, it's got to be placed by a certain date. And I would like to get a date, frankly, I think it's going to come back from the attorneys. Okay, I don't think that's unreasonable, I think it will help inform the public and your cooperation, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. It's great to have the freedom to do that. I would like to start by reading a poem that I made back in two thousand and twelve. And this is about celebration Independence Day. Now I know it's not Independence Day, but it's coming up in a couple of months. Independence Day commonly spoke of as the Fourth of July is a holiday that cannot be denied. It is more than just a holiday to celebrate watching fireworks or going to the lake or eating watermelon with family. Excuse me, around the picnic table with family or friends telling stories as they're able. It all started back in seventeen seventy-six when the United States declared independence from the Brits. The thirteen colonies were separated during the American Revolution. But a proposal by Richard Henry Lee, he knew there was a solution. The Americans were tired of laws without representation. They wanted to be free and have a new nation. A man named Thomas Jefferson sat down with pen in hand, wrote out the famous Declaration of Independence. The second sentence which he wrote is one which you should know. Remember it always in your mind and others you may show. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights that are among these, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. There were four other men who helped with the patriotic script, Roger Sherman of Connecticut, John Adams of Massachusetts, Benjamin Franklin of Pennsylvania, and Robert Livingston of New York. Just a reminder of our fathers who were spiritual and strong. John Adams wrote a letter to his wife Abigail. He was so excited, he just had to tell that this declaration would be so important to all, many celebrations would up on our nation call. And the day should be commemorated as a day of deliverance, being devoted to God Almighty, being thankful for His eminence. So here we are in the year two thousand and twenty-four, the Fourth of July is near. We'll soon be celebrating Independence Day. Praise our Jesus, our Savior, dear.
Can you summarize, please? Your three minutes have expired.
Okay, yes, thank you. I just want to say that I am thankful for you, men and women who are here. And I appreciate the things that you have done and are doing. I urge you to remember to be thoughtful to one another. I know on a team like this, there can be many divisions. Love one another, it's hard, I know, sometimes. Be agreeable. Even if you disagree sometimes. And treat everybody equal. Whether you are interviewing somebody or no matter what, be equal, be thoughtful, be kind.
Thank you. What was your name again?
My name is Sandy Shields and I'm from Assyria Township.
Thank you, Sandy, good message this morning. Additional public comment? Hearing none, we will move ahead with our agenda, Mr. Yarger, good morning.
She just said we should be timed.
And you took it to heart.
Well, thanks, appreciate that.
Is this our Back to the Future agenda items from two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three?
I, I will say the, the grant fiscal years are much closer than they used to be. I remember I first got this job, we were like, we'd be thirty-six months out from the year the grant was wrote for. So I'm here today to ask to move forward to the full Board of Commissioners approval by resolution of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three Homeland Security Grant and Governmental Funding Agreement between the County of St. Joseph and the County of Berry and authorize the chairman and administrator to sign. Basically, the state requires each district to have one fiduciary, so they don't have to deal with all the counties. St. Joe County stepped up to the plate and is our fifth district's fiduciary.
Okay. These are the same contracts that we've signed year in, year out?
Yep, same contract, just the signatures change at the bottom.
Okay, so the contract didn't change, language didn't change?
Nope, nope.
Attorneys have reviewed everything?
Yeah.
I didn't see anything different in it, so?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, questions for Mr. Yarger? Hearing none, the chair, I'm just curious as to how we got, what's the connection with St. Joe then, their administrator?
They're, they're the fiduciary for the grant funds.
Okay.
So and a little more than that, the person that is hired by them through grant funding to do the M and A on the grant, does a lot of the, making sure the requests are put into the state on time and all the bookkeeping end of it. And they actually write the checks for the equipment or training we do and then gets reimbursement from the state. So it takes almost all of the out-of-pocket costs for individual counties out of it. Because as the funds have shrunk, we've, we've pretty much pulled back and we support trainings and the regional teams that we put in place over the last twenty years. So like the bomb teams, the tech rescue team, the SWAT team, I know I'm missing some other ones there we got out there, but that's where lion's share of the funds go.
They have similar contracts with other counties or just us?
Every count, all nine counties in the fifth district.
Okay.
They're, they're one fiduciary for the nine counties.
All right, thank you. Yep. Catherine?
The, why are we going back to two thousand and twenty-two?
That's the grant we're functioning in right, you're functioning in right now. We just started spending funds from the two thousand and twenty-two grant.
All righty.
We're working at the speed of government. Oh, that's supposed to be nice.
Yeah, but you also have to be truthful, so.
Correct.
Thank you.
Interesting, okay. There are no other questions, the chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners adoption of resolution twenty-four dash one five, a resolution authorizing for the two thousand and twenty-two Homeland Security Grant Program Inter- Intergovernmental Funding Agreement between the County of St. Joseph and the County of Berry, and authorize the chairman and county administrator to sign it. So moved Hatfield. Motion by Hatfield, support by Getty, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners adoption of Resolution 24-15, a resolution of authorization for the 2022 Homeland Security Grant Program Intergovernmental Funding Agreement between the County of St. Joseph and the County of Berry, and authorize the chair and county administrator to sign it. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. And?
Do we have to do 2023?
We got to do 2023, too.
To do 2023. So, the Chair would also entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners adoption of Resolution 24-16, a resolution of authorization for the 2023 Homeland Security Grant Program Intergovernmental Funding Agreement between the County of St. Joseph and the County of Berry, and authorize the chairman and county administrator to sign it. So moved Doster.
Support.
Smelker.
Motion by Doster, support by Smelker, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners adoption of Resolution 24-16, resolution of authorization for the 2023 Homeland Security Grant Program Intergovernmental Funding Agreement between the County of St. Joseph and the County of Berry, and authorize the chair and county administrator to sign it. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Let's get to 2024, brother.
We just started on the workbook on that, so a couple of years, I'll be back.
Messiah.
Good morning.
Morning. Good morning.
I'm off to the envelope.
Is there money in it?
I don't hear any. Okay. I am here today to present to you the L-4029 -- oh, thank you. Thought I wasn't talking into the microphone. The L-4029 tax rate request for the summer levy. This is done every year in the summer and fall, so that the local treasurers can collect tax revenue for the county. I also included the L-4028 form, which is simply all of the millage reduction calculations for the taxing entities in the county. And that gets carried forward onto the L-4029, so you can see why our tax rate is being reduced this year.
Very good. Questions from Commissioners, from Messiah? You're doing such a good job. It is so explanatory, and it's all these numbers, so. No, that is always great information from you, it's always clear, and we can make that simple. And again, this is a form that we approve twice a year, anyway, so.
Yep, yep.
Standard operating procedure. The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the 2024 L-4029 tax rate request for the levy of summer property taxes to be signed by the chairperson. So moved.
Support.
Motion by Tunisen, support by Getty, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval for the 2024 L-4029 tax rate request for levy of the summer property taxes to be signed by the chairperson. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Messiah.
Thank you.
Michael. All set.
All right, good morning. This is a request to approve budget amendment, or actually recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of budget amendment 24-A. It's a fairly minor budget amendment, but as we get ready for the budget cycle, the start of the budget for 2025, we take a quick look and see if there are any updates that we have, so that we can incorporate them for comparative purposes as we go into 2025. The most significant is an increase in revenue to the general fund of $236,345. You'll find that more specifically on page two of the amendment. It is revenue from the marijuana tax. Previously, we've received about $50,000. It's a formula that the state of Michigan uses to distribute marijuana tax funds. These are the recreational marijuana tax, there's medical marijuana tax, and then there's a state, an additional state grant that we get. But this is the general fund revenue for recreational marijuana tax. It's based on the number of dispensaries. We have more dispensaries now than we did last year, when we did the budget for 2024. So we just budgeted what we had received in the past, which was around that $51,000. Two things can fluctuate with regard to this particular revenue source. One is the actual amount per dispensary. It's about $51,000, I think, almost $52,000 a dispensary that the local units get. The other is the number of dispensaries that we have. So it is a revenue source that can have some fluctuation. The most significant impact is that from the previous point at which the state measured this and marked we had one dispensary, I think now they recognize us as having four. That's the result of the revenue side. On the expenditure side, there are a couple of minor amendments. The largest is that is on page seven. $176,345 of that additional revenue has been placed in contingency. Those are funds that are uncommitted, that the board at this point could use for something else down the road. So we've chosen to put those into contingency. We needed, also on page seven, to increase the appropriation to the master land use plan fund. That was, fund was set up to pay for the master land use plan update. We've completed that. We will now use that fund to pay for the zoning ordinance rewrite that follows that. So the $40,000 will go to that, and then a transfer of $20,000 to the crime victims' crime victim rights fund. And that's a state grant that pays for a position or part of a position in the prosecutor's office to manage the crime victim rights grant. Unfortunately, the grant hasn't kept up with expenditure needs, so we need to make supplemental appropriation to that. Page eight of the amendment shows a little more detail of the expenditures. Those that are highlighted in, I guess gray, that are highlighted, more on the top, we highlight those because those are either amendments that have previously been approved by the board, and we're now just incorporating them into this document, or by policy, they're amendments that administration can make, and we then now reflect those in a budget document. The three amendments that I spoke of that occur here are listed just below that contingency, master plan, and crime victims. And then there are, on pages nine through 12, a few amendments to other funds. Charlton Park, for example, friend of the court, Parks and Recs, beginning on page nine. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions. Detail associated with each of those is then found on page 12. So I'd be happy to, I'll stop there and be happy to try to answer any questions.
Is the marijuana funds that you referenced, you said roughly it's 50 or 51,000 per dispensary in the county?
Yeah.
So that's a, is that a direct payment to the county, or are we sharing that revenue?
That's direct to us.
Are the local units a guy?
You know, I'd have to look. I apologize, that's a good question. I looked at the county's revenue sharing page at the state. I didn't look at the locals. I can find that out.
Okay.
Well, I think, like Rutland Township gets a share of that.
I think that, I think that the local units also get their, they get revenue sharing. This is, in large part, just under the umbrella heading, revenue sharing for treasury. They get their own, so they would get direct payments. I just don't know how much they get.
It was interesting, we were having a conversation with one of Michael's counterparts in Branch County, Coldwater Bud?
Bud, yep.
And I think he had referenced that because they are almost a border county with Ohio and Indiana that don't have recreation or medical, they have something like 30 dispensaries in that area, and revenue wasn't quite at a million, but I think it was $800, $850,000.
Must be why they call it Bud.
They appropriated the right guy there, so.
I can, I can print, if you're interested, there's a sheet that shows what each county gets, the number of dispensaries, and the amount that they get, so I'll be happy to forward that to you.
Okay.
It also shows you what people are spending their money on.
I, yeah.
So we can have a conversation at some point with that $176,000 in contingency, if we want to put that, earmark that for somebody, or look at future use for that.
Yep. Right now, what it would, what it does is it's just, it's uncommitted, and it can't be used unless the board commits it to something. If the board didn't commit it, it would just then become part of fund balance at the end of the year.
I'm thinking we'll have that discussion, but it might be good to kind of earmark some of that, looking at our jail project in the future, something like that.
No, there's always, I'll share, there's always a preface to that, right? That I don't come back and say, we've lost a, there's a revenue, that's why we put it in contingency. That a revenue source has gone down.
Yeah.
Which then allows you, means you either have to cut the budget, or draw from fund balance. In this case, you have contingency to draw from if there's a revenue source, so.
Additional questions for Michael?
When is a good time to ask about the cash investment report? I had a question regarding that.
So, can we, maybe the next meeting, and I'll have Sue Vandecar attend?
Okay.
She's more intimately familiar with the cash and investment report than what I would be.
Okay, very good.
Or if you want to?
Well, it's just a simple kind of question, maybe you can. It was regarding the 843, the Gun Lake weed assessment?
Okay.
And I was just, if I was reading this correctly, so cash is cash on hand.
Yeah.
Investments is CDs or whatever.
Correct.
So the total, they have $393,000 in that fund, according to this?
I, let me, before I inaccurately clarify, let me clarify that.
Okay. I serve on that board, so I'm
Yep.
About ready to do an additional assessment, and that amount would cover yet another year's worth of treatment, and so I'm not sure that we would need to go forward if that's the case.
I'll go with the questions. I'll get with Sue, and we'll have an answer for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's quite a contingency in that fund, so.
Yeah.
Might be able to reduce that cost for the residents there, so. Wonderful. Hearing none. The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of budget amendment 24-A. So moved.
Support.
Motion by Colton, support by Hatfield, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of budget amendment 24-A. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Chair, we'll take a little break.
Take a, you need a five-minute break? Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, as requested. We are at recess. We are at recess.
The border campaign is expensive.
The board will come back in session. Michael.
All right, before I jump into the next item, if I can follow up to Commissioner Doster's question, Sue was listening to the meeting, so she was anticipating the question, so.
Nice.
That is correct. The cash-in investments are three hundred and ninety-three, two oh three, forty-four as of March. About half of that, one hundred and seventy thousand, is invested in the CD.
Okay.
At five percent, and the rest is liquid and available.
All right, thank you.
Yep. All right, my next item is a request to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the 2025 budget calendar. So we are at that time of the year. May kicks off the budget process. For those that either aren't familiar or just haven't tucked that in the back of your mind, then June is the month when departments fill out budget requests, submit them early July to my office. I'm working on revenues during, to the best I can during June. Departments provide a lot of that data as well on the revenue side. So July, my office is putting together the expenditure and revenue estimates. August, we submit a draft budget for everyone's review and inspection to the degree that it's necessary, hold appeals, and then, and if you recall, those appeals occur in front of you, that's an opportunity, and I have always encouraged that and continue to encourage that departments have a path directly to you should they disagree or question or just have issue with some, with a particular issue I'm recommending in the budget. And then September, ideally, we have everything put together, it goes out to the public for their review and inspection, and sits until the end of October, at which point the board holds a public hearing on the budget and adopts the budget at your last meeting in October. We are required, unlike the federal government, to have a balanced budget adopted before we start the calendar year, so there's nothing that requires that it be done before the end of the year, although it makes it a whole lot easier in doing the process when you can hold the, be prepared and hold the public hearing at the last meeting in October in accordance with the Budgeting Act. And we have, that shouldn't be a problem at all.
Okay. Questions for Michael? This looks pretty standard. I think we've seen this, we've seen this budget calendar about every year, so.
Yes.
There are no questions. The Chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the 2025 budget calendar.
So moved.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Smelker, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of the 2025 budget calendar. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
I'd just take a quick moment while we're talking about budget items. The audit, we're hoping to see a draft of that any time. The audit's due to the state of Michigan at the end of June, so sometime in June it will be presented to the board, but it's moving along to our understanding and knowledge well. We haven't had any issues at this point arise that we haven't been able to get information that the auditors have requested, get information to the auditors that they have requested. You will, of course, have an opportunity to meet with the auditors, and I always encourage you, a great question to ask them is directly, is have you, did you encounter any issues getting information from management? And I say management loosely because there are a number of us that are involved in that, but regardless, that you need to complete the audit, and hopefully that answer should always be no, we have not encountered. So it's progressing, and I don't anticipate any deficiencies at this point. The big issue we've been working on is to make sure that all of the ARPA funds have been addressed and accounted for, that if you'll recall, at the end of 2024, you have to have all funds committed. They don't have to be spent until the end of 2026, but they have to be committed. My goal was to have that all addressed in the 2023 audit, so if the auditors do have some issue with regard to the definition of committed, that we now have the remainder of this year to resolve that instead of waiting until 2024 and then not having an issue any time to address it. So my expectation is that the ARPA funds, however, will all meet that definition of having been committed, and we won't have to delay that into the next year.
Awesome.
Do I answer any questions? Otherwise, thank you.
Liberty public comment at this time. Any member of the, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes. This looks serious.
Joel, it's in Rutland Township again. There was a questionnaire from the Berry County GOP sent out with a deadline of May tenth. I will not be filling this out, and here are the reasons why. Before I even would fill it out, this questionnaire sets up the GOP as the paragon of virtue and the bastion of truth, which I think is laughable. May I ask the GOP what their response was to Lee Chatfield when he was caught having relations with his fourteen-year-old sister-in-law? What was their response to the guilty plea from Senator John Bison? What was their response to the vote Gina Johnson made on the eighty-two million dollar, or billion-dollar budget, which included religious tests for state troopers, gender-affirming health care, nearly one billion dollars in no-bid pork, as well as thirty million to renewable energy that supposedly they hate? Why would I trust them to judge my answers with their arbitrary metric when they held a discussion on removing me from the ballot at the meeting prior? Proof positive that they plan on weaponizing the party against those who refuse to capitulate on their values. Everett Dirksen once said, "I am the man of fixed and unbending principles, the first which is to remain flexible at any time." This must be their motto. I would much rather follow the legacy of Reverend Shuttlesworth, of which I gave a presentation on titled "A Hill to Die On." The questions are ludicrous. Many of them seem to be a test for knowledge rather than try to understand the candidate's platform or what they stand for. One of the questions, "How does common law apply today?" Well, they can stop me if they've read the Michigan Constitution, but they'd have the answer to that in Article Three, Section Seven, if they'd read it. How does a law that infringes on the Second Amendment, how would a law that infringes on the Second Amendment be constitutional and enforceable? This is a false dichotomy, a fake dilemma. They might as well ask me why I shot JFK. At the end, they ask for an electronic signature, legally binding, and you can talk to any lawyer, and they will tell you that contracts go both ways. The protections in this agreement only flow one direction. It offers no protection to any candidate, no backing, no incentive to do what's right, only the promise that they will tear you down if you disagree with them. Why on God's green earth would I subject myself to this when not only do they refuse to hold their chosen ones accountable, while at the same time attempt to remove people from the ballot? With Republicans like this, who needs Democrats?
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Amber Holtrust, Hastings Township. I didn't plan to speak today, but since there's so much attention on this questionnaire, which I had nothing to do with, I didn't make it, I didn't circulate it, I want you guys to know that the concern, I believe, in my opinion, that the party has is people falsifying their political affiliation with voters, not necessarily attacking each other. We still have constitutional rights in this country, and we still respect each other and our opportunity to be able to run for public office, but the biggest concern, in my opinion, and I haven't gone through that questionnaire yet myself, so I don't know what all is entailed in it, but is for people to not be running for a political office under one ticket when historically they voted with another, they've worked elections with another ticket, especially because our voter base in Berry County is so conservative. And so the perception is that a candidate could run as a Republican to get elected by a pool of conservatives, even though they don't share those values. So therefore, you're defrauding your voters by not being honest with them. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Larry Bass, Stillland, Carlton Township. One thing I didn't mention the first time around is we have an attorney and retainer working on the ordinance. Are we the customers? If we're the customers, we have the right to put a end date on when we want that accomplished, if not. Changing the subject somewhat, I don't know what the previous dissertation had to do with county business at all, and it's obvious some people just like to sit up here and try to get publicity, okay? And I think sometimes you had an opportunity a couple of years ago to put in the board rules that the public comment should pertain to county business. You know, not talking about the causalities of the first punitive war, which I'll be more than happy to share with you if that doesn't get changed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. Additional public comment? Hearing done. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Tunis.
I'm good, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
I have some comments. Few weeks back, I mentioned the concerns with the newly-formed Personnel and Human Resources Committee. Let it lay for a few weeks, and it still bothered me, it's still a concern. When we passed the, and I'm ashamed of myself for saying I did vote yes on it, the description of Personnel and Human Resources Committee and what they'd be responsible for, my thinking was that at that time, we were putting this together to help with our immense problem of replacing a Michael Brown in some other very important positions. But what I see is it's turned into a committee that has a committee meeting on Thursday, which basically, if it looks like an apple, smells like an apple, tastes like an apple, it's an apple. It's just another board meeting with four commissioners. We're expecting our citizens to not only get off on Tuesday morning for meetings, now we're expecting them to show up on Thursday mornings to see what's going on in the county. The committee itself should fall under the jurisdiction of the board. The board should decide what that committee is going to work on. The board should decide when it's time to turn over something to a committee to follow up, to research, to bring in the companies, just as the board did last week when we approved, they came and asked for approval to sort down to one company that would be there to help us in our search, and that's the way the rest of it should be. It should not be a board of four that decides what they're going to approve, and we even have the audacity to put in here that in addition, this committee shall be responsible to the Board of Commissioners for all county personal matters, including but not limited to the following. But not limited to, you might as well open the door to everything. So I'm not very happy with it. I feel like I, as a commissioner, was elected to represent my four townships. I was not elected to come in here and put a rubber stamp on something else that another group has approved, and it can be a group of three to make a quorum. So basically, we're going down to a group of three deciding these very important matters that are going forth before us. I need to be a part to represent my constituents. They elected me, and out of no respect to the other four commissioners on the board, they did not elect them to represent them, and that's what they're doing. I think we need to look at this, it doesn't need to, I've talked to other commissioners, suggesting, well, maybe I'll have to wait till the end of the year. Well, it doesn't wait till the end of the year for me. We can at any time adjust, change whatever we want to in our bylaws pertaining to committees. And I think we need to take a serious look at it, when we have a committee of four, and they are deciding what that committee is going to do, what they're going to decide on. And we are left here to be approval choices of one in many cases with our applications coming in. We have two, three veterans on this board, and I believe next week, we're having another committee of the board meeting to go through applicants and decide which ones are best suited for the Veterans Affairs Board in the county. I see no, I see no reason that you have two veterans here that are only going to be here to rubber stamp what that board has approved. I think it's time that we looked at that a little closer and remember what we, what we put that board in there for. It was not to take up eighty-five percent of the county's business, it was to replace upcoming positions that are going to be very difficult, but not all this other garbage that we've thrown in there that should be decided by the board, and the board should decide when that committee has a, has a subject that they need to decide on. And I think we all need to look at it very seriously, because I am feeling like it, and my constituents are feeling like it, when I say, they asked me a question about something, I didn't have anything to do with that. Why didn't you? You're our representative, and I agree with you one hundred percent, so. I'm embarrassed to say that I did approve of this conglomeration of a paragraph in our bylaws that basically strips me of my rights to represent my townships, and that's where I'm at. And that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Well said. Vice Chair Hadfield.
Yeah, I would welcome, you know, us revisiting that. I don't think that we have been quite as overbearing as what that may appear. You know, I think we've tried to bring recommendations forward, yeah, as we did last week when we were talking about how we proceed with the choice of a selection committee. We did have a special meeting yesterday to interview two prospective search firms. We were very pleased with how those discussions went. I think those two, in our minds, stood out at the very top of the six proposals that we received. Either one of them potentially could do a very good job for us, but we're in the process of now checking references, and we'll meet again to decide on which firm we want to to recommend. So moving forward. But I think as far as the concerns expressed, you know, we would welcome, we didn't choose our assignment. We were given an assignment. And, you know, I think that if we want to fine-tune that, that's fine. You know, the whole idea behind putting committees in place was to help improve the efficiency of of the board, not usurp any decision-making. And if we need to correct the assignment to more clearly reflect that, great.
Commissioner Smelker?
May I respond to that, please, Mr. Chairman? We did appreciate the fact, I appreciate the fact that they did come, that this board, this committee came back with asking approval of the board of how they proceeded on picking the replacement. And that exactly is what I'm talking about. It should come through the board first. Any item in there should come through the board first, and then it should be given to the committee to review, to study, to educate, and come back with what they find out. It is not for that board to interview people, pick two out of five, and come back and give us a choice of one. And we have never seen an interview. We haven't had the opportunity to discuss for that. We haven't had the opportunity to promote a candidate for that position. I'm out there in four townships, and I tell them every every month, get up there, say in the vouch for me over there. I get up there, and I tell them to get up there, apply for these positions, let me know which ones you're trying for. I'll see if I can put in a good word for you. Well, I don't see it, myself as putting in a good word, when I meet you at the coffee shop and we discuss it, or I have to go to a committee meeting and act this public comment for my townships. I am not in the public comment division. I am in the representing division of my townships. And when we say fine-tweak it, that's cutting it pretty thin. It's not fine-tweaking it. It is a disaster that we have let our representation and our power go to the four people on the board. Nothing against those four people. I think we've got the most amazing board in the world, but I think we have missed the point on this and what this committee's for. And that's what we need to look at.
And I would point out that those meetings are open to all commissioners, that you do get the board packets, and you can review those board packets, you can review the resumes of those, you can talk to commissioners and say, hey, so-and-so is an excellent candidate. You can you can invest the time into it. Because you're not on that board doesn't mean that you are excluded from reviewing, participating, providing guidance, or showing up to those meetings.
They're seen as a public person being able to do, not a representative of my townships. I have no vote on that committee. Three people can be a quorum on that committee. Three people can be the majority on that committee. So don't sit and tell me that I can recommend, or I can bring something to you in public comment of my candidate, and you can go and make the vote and the decision on which one's going to get it. You have missed the point.
I think it's worth having an agenda request and further discussion on this, so.
And I would respectfully appreciate it that it does come up, and it does not get bad-wounded, because this is very serious.
Commissioner Smelker?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Getty? Commissioner Dalton?
You know, as far as this discussion goes on the Personnel Committee formation, you know, I personally felt that we should either be a committee of the whole or break into standing committees. But I felt that this thing in the middle probably wasn't the best thing, which is why I voted against it. But I think a solution to this, which could possibly satisfy Bruce, is to, if the focus is on replacing our county administrator, Michael Brown, then maybe it should be not a standing committee, but an ad hoc committee. And I would like to bring that into the discussion. Secondarily, and this is for next year, but a lot with our with our open comments and how they kind of go, open public comment, a lot of meetings, if they have two public comment sections, the first public comment section will only be addressing things on the agenda for that day. And we should consider that for next year. The second one's a free-for-all. You can talk about what's going on in the city of Hastings, the Constitution, the Republican Party, anything you want to talk about. But the first one should definitely focus on the meeting agenda for that day, but we can talk about that in board rules for next year.
Thank you. Commissioner Doster?
I think I've got to veer away from those discussions for a moment. Back to this Gun Lake Improvement Board that I sit on, where, you know, I was making these comments about the amount of money and that. I just thought I'd, we had a kind of a curious thing occur on that and that I might like people's input. That board, you know, it has to comply with the Open Meeting Act, and so we have to appoint someone to be the the person that's in charge of that. And they had Jim Dahl and Vivian Connor sit on that board, chair and the secretary positions. And we had quite a discussion. They had wanted to appoint an attorney as the direct person, the FOIA officer for the thing. And we got into a discussion as to how extraordinarily expensive that would be, in that since Jim Dahl's office is the holder of all the records, that it would not be practical at all to appoint an attorney as the FOIA officer because he doesn't hold any of the records. And then, I mean, it would just, one individual could bombard that board with FOIA requests and bankrupt. This this amount of money would not be enough in a year if that were to occur. So we had kind of a pointed discussion about it, and we eventually did appoint the Berry County Drain Commission Office as the FOIA officer for the board, and we're going to give that a shot and see. The vast majority of FOIA requests are pretty easy. They're generally agenda requests or or something that's just readily available anyway. So we're going to give that a try. If he gets into serious trouble with something, he has the opportunity to to discuss it with an attorney, but we're not going to make them the front line of of all requests.
Are they compensating him for that time?
No.
Free charge?
Free charge. Well, the his deputy takes notes minutes and is compensated. So I'm not sure that she might, the position may fall on her, and I don't know how that would work exactly, but.
How did the relationship start with the Drain Commissioner being on the Gun Lake Improvement Board?
It's, I think it's Public Act 307 or something like that. It's spelled out in the statute of the Drain Code for these improvements, for designating how a lake board can get set. The reason they did it there was Gun, or Gun Lake, it's in two counties and then four townships. And so to do something as simple as like weed control, which was what the the basic purpose of the board really is, is just weed control. It would take all four townships to do everything exactly the same, and it was such a, you know, a nightmare of a hassle. Each one would have to do, create their own assessments and hold their own hearings for each of the, and so they created the one board. And by statute, there has to be a representative from each of the four townships, there has to be somebody from the the Lake Association, there's the two Drain Commissioners, the Drain Commissioner from Allegan County also sits on that board, and the two county commissioners that are affected. So there's a one from Allegan County as well.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. And just to wrap up, thank you, Rich, for coming this morning, talking about mental health awareness. Definitely interested in that concept of emergency mental health care. So, you know, I don't know how they address it, and I don't know how the state does it inexpensively, but hopefully, we can collaborate in Berry County like we've always done and have some solutions that really help people who have that need. So that'd be outstanding. So definitely appreciate that. So was at the MAC conference last Tuesday with Michael Brown, some very interesting speakers, met a lot of people, talk about building and construction, just a lot of good contacts there. One of the breakout sessions was specifically on renewable energy and solar ordinances. So we did, I think with as much as we've learned, we probably could have taught some of that, but they're still talking about PA 235 and how they want 50% renewables by 2030 and 100% by 2040. Talked a lot about CROs, compatible renewable energy ordinances. One thing we did learn is that the difference between, and I didn't know this, and our attorney hadn't hadn't pointed it out before either, that if they choose not to use a local ordinance and go directly to the MSP, that they have to use government prevailing wage contractors. So, which creates a ton of additional expense for the contractor at that point to do it. So there is definitely going to be a benefit for working local. So our goal is, like you said, we'll keep working on our ordinance, and I don't know if Michael's got an update on that, but we'll reach out to him and see what the State of the Union is there. The MPSC is also holding stakeholder meetings, taking input on their ordinance, which we all feel was very poorly and very quickly written. So we're hoping to get input from there. We also learned that every project also needs a stormwater permit from the County Drain Office. And if there are lakes, rivers, streams, anything else, they also may need to work with Eagle. So it's not quite as simple as they thought. There are other considerations that I've made notes on that we need to be sure are covered in our ordinance as well. So it was a good session, a lot of questions, a lot of information. So very good overall. So it's worth attending those if you have the time, and Tuesday is typically the day to do that. So anyways, that's all I have for today. I appreciate your time. Get home before the rain starts. I hear it's coming, so thank you.